Hold, hold, let the camera load. Give it a sec. Let our camera load. Give it a sec, guys. Yeah, this is webcam stream for today and it's just this. Hold. Is it gonna be silly? Hang on. I think it's being silly. Hold. Don't we love when the camera doesn't work? Give it a sec. Hang on. We're going back to this. That's loud for me, I'm turning that down. There you go, okay. Hold on, people. Um, while I figure this out. How's everyone doing? I hope everyone is doing good. Don't mind me while I try to figure this out, it was literally working earlier. Don't we love when cameras don't work? Isn't it just so much fun? If I have to do PNG for this, I'm gonna lose my mind. How am I doing? I was doing good. Until this decided not to work. Hold on. Hi. Hello. Hope all well, hope all, all was well. Until this didn't work. Hold on. Don't mind me. Okay. I got that to work. Hold. There we go. I think. There we go, oh my god, finally. Okay. There we go. Hi. Sorry, hold on. Let me let the people see me. Hi. Don't we love whenever stuff doesn't work? It wouldn't be a sun stream if stuff didn't work. So. Let me fix the camera. Hi, everyone. There we go. Now. Guys, face reveal. Let me fit. Let me let you guys see me, will this work? This might not work. There we go, okay. Megan Moo, FG Moo mention? Sorry. I had to. It's Moo's alt. Um. Well, we all know what's happening today. Lemon, thank you for the sub. Thank you, my goat. Um. Today's big day, today's practice day. Um. It's very exciting. Um. Yeah. Actually, let me change title, so you all know my team, so we don't have to keep. Hold on. That way, you all know who is who. There we go. There we go. Has it updated? I think it's updated. Your keyboard sounds so nice. I love this keyboard. So much. It. I was, I was just on the phone and I had my phone right next to it and I was like, I'm so sorry if this thing is so loud, but I just love the sound of it. Oh yeah, we have, hold on. Um. Let me. Mods, would you mind putting the back-to-back link in uh, our chat and pinning it? Thank you, um. We ju- we just had an episode come out. Nine minutes ago, I realized you can't see my phone. Um. So, yeah. Um. There we go, thank you, Mudzy. My goat. Um. I think everyone else is kinda doing their own, starting soon. Um. So yeah. Uh, we're just gonna be children. Who wants, let's do a, um, one out of ten. How's everyone doing? Everyone having a good day since today's Thursday? No, yes, today's Thursday, so since Tuesday. Um, I hope everyone's had a good day. Um. How about you? I am doing good, now that my camera is working, I'm doing great. Um. There's a bit of stress there in the beginning. Um. I'm trying to finish a piece, oh, you got this Scarlet, I believe in you. Goat, you got this. Um. I would say today is like an eight out of ten, I woke up early. Um. I got up like at like six, I went and I worked out. I was very productive, I got school stuff done. Um. It's been a very productive day. And I don't, I'm not a morning person. That's early, I, I know, I almost did not get up. That almost did not happen. Um. Alarms. We love a good alarm. Um, and that is how I caught up. I would not have otherwise, um. There it is, okay. Um. Just waiting for the people. I'm gonna go ahead and actually just go in the V suit and then. There we are. Okay. I feel like I can't hear Discord and that's stressing me out. I don't know why I feel like that. I don't think it's cuz I can't, I can't, I can't hear them pinging. Um. Yeah. Uh, we're just gonna be working, I think we're doing a mix of MCC, MCCI? When you wake up thinking it's Friday, but it's actually Thursday, oh, I have no idea what day it is. I know it, I never know. I thought today was Friday, I think, yeah, I think, I think I I thought it was Friday too, yeah. It's the day of the week, my taking college classes is really helpful with knowing what day it is. Um, but other than that I would I would not know. It keeps me on a schedule. I only know when weekends are the rest, the rest is just between. That is so valid. Think we need to add an extra day to the weekends, so I actually, I scheduled my classes. Um. So that they, I get Friday and Monday off. So I have my classes Tuesday through Thursday, so I get like a really long weekend. It's so great, I highly recommend doing that, if anyone is in college and can schedule classes. I did the same thing when I scheduled, yep, you get it. You get it. I highly recommend, it's like my long weekend hack, cuz then you can kinda go on like short trips and stuff, you just get like, it's chill. That truly is a college hack, highly recommend. Hosear, oh my god. Can you guys even hear it? I don't know, hold on. You'll hear it in a sec, trust. But Hosear is playing. I can't alter my college days, ugh. I just, I picked classes that were on like the specific days, um. Do you do homeschooling or in person? I was homeschooled and then I graduated, um. So now I'm, I, I'm at UCLA, but not full-time, um. I'm doing like the extension classes, but I'm doing film classes and it's a lot of fun. Um. Was it you who was going to the concert soon? Going in September. Which I guess is at this point with how quickly the year is going past soon. Isn't it crazy, it's already May? Like, happy first of May, by the way, but isn't it crazy, it's already May? Like, that shouldn't be that's not okay. Honestly. May it feel so bizarre, like why did the, the conventions in, I leave in like twenty-six days? Which is crazy. Oh, I got a message. Hold on. My god. Aunt Frost sent me, um a VOD to watch MCC, my goats. Is this month, I'm so excited, Lemon, are you going? I feel like I might have known this. I forget every, like who, who all is going. I don't know. There's so many, I feel like there's a lot of people going to this one. Um. If you're going, we should meet up. We gotta meet up. I know, two, two of my mods are going. That's who I, second I've ever been, this is my third convention, cuz I did VidCon, um Anaheim, and then I did um TwitchCon San Diego, and now, I might, it depends if I'm free. I could say this now, it depends if I'm working. I love that I could say that and not have to be like, it depends if I'm around. Um, I need to know your opinions on Sunrise on the Reaping, oh my god, JoJo and I were just talking about that. Ugh. Sunrise on the Reaping. My beloved. I will cry. Um. No spoilers about it. But that is a brutal book. It's rough. It's so good, oh, it's so good, but it, it destroyed me. How do you feel about the casting so far? I like the casting, I think it's really good. Um. I, such a good book anymore, I need, I need all of her books out now, I did a re-watch though. Um, of all like the originals and it's I've heard all this stuff from my friend, are you guys okay? No. No, I'm literally traumatized from that book. I, I finished Sunrise on the Reaping and then I had to go right into reading like a really happy book to like debrief, relax, heal from Sunrise on the Reaping. Where's Eli? Eli needs to be here for our Sunrise on the Reaping conversation. What's your favorite book? Oh, I don't know. What are you reading right now? I just finished a book called Palace of Eros. Is it in here? I don't think it is. Um. It's a really good book, it's like a Sapphic Greek mythology, highly recommend. It was so good. Um, I flew through it, the writing was amazing. Highly recommend that one, um, favorite books? I love Harry Potter. Obviously. Um, I love I love Midnight Library, if you've heard of that, what is it called again? Palace of Eros, hold on, I'll just, I'll just type it here, so you can see it. That's not how you spell palace, hold on. That book. With the space. Not the typo. Um. Highly recommend that one, I love Matt Haig, he's such a good author. It's uh I, I love all of his books, I went up to someone's house the other day and they had like the book on like a copy table and I was like, oh my god, you love Matt Haig? I love Matt Haig, oh my god, I got so excited. Oh, hold on. Hi. Hold on, let me pause my Spotify. I'm good, how are you? Yes, let me, let me, um let make sure the people can hear you. Okay, I think the people, there we go. I'm just talking to myself.
Yeah, you're just like, it's just the voices, guys, you can hear this one in Spanish, man?
Guys, trust, he's there.
Guys, I promise I'm not crazy.
I promise. Oh my god. No, I because, so I just got a PC and I'm still having, not just, like a few months ago, and I'm still having to like get used to it. And like, figure out how it works. And so, I'm like
I get that, it's part of the fun of getting a new computer, it's like a, a toy that you kind of keep discovering the things all the time. And yes, I could watch a like online YouTube video telling me how to run everything differently.
Fun in that.
Exactly, discovery is part of the journey.
Exactly. No, I, I just had to like reset my computer because something on it wasn't working and it wasn't letting me open the MCC launcher. It was something on my side, it wasn't like anything with the actual launcher, and so I had to reset my PC and then it wiped everything. So I had to reset it up, like a month after I'd finally finished setting it up. And that was, that was fun.
At least she got it.
I got it, I got it settled, finally. And I think I, I can confidently, I can confidently say like, I know how to work this now.
Yay, which is a good thing to hear from my teammate, like three days before the event.
Now imagine, I'm like, I still don't know how to use a mouse, can you tell me how this works?
You're, you're like, so what button is it to go forward?
That'd be so bad. Oh my god. Hello. Oh.
Hello.
Never mind. Um, no, yeah, I've been It's up to you guys, I've kind of been practicing everything, I've been doing a lot of, um uh, parkour. Because I feel like that's what I was most confident in and I've learned a lot from that, so I know I know a lot more about that and so I'm a lot, really confident in that, um. I did, I did, um like a MCC practice with JoJo and Aunt Frost the other day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we worked on Battle Box and that was a lot of fun. And I thought I was like, not too terrible at it, I say not too terrible, because like comparatively there's a lot better people.
The advantage we have is like, Purpled is very good at like Battle Box, so he can be kind of the like leader for that type of stuff, um. Honestly, and the fact that you're saying like parkour is the thing you're most comfortable in is a good one, cuz I think parkour and like just general movement is one of the most like transferable skills in MCC, like it can cover a wider range of games if you know how to like move quite quickly.
Yes, I, I do, I have been obsessively playing MCC, I like parkour. And just like, I probably look crazy, like my Discord activity is just like fifty-five hours on MCC.
That's funny. The main right now is I just keep running the each race map on, like
Oh, I
On the training server.
Yeah, no, I, I've been doing that as well. I, I like, I feel like that was when I was most excited to practice. Um, and I've gotten I not, I just discovered like the shortcuts when I was playing with JoJo and Aunt, and so I haven't had time to like work those in. But just the main route, I'm like, good with.
Yeah. It's cuz, uh, normally when we're like on a break from MCC, I kind of just shut off that part of my brain fully. So like coming back on and I'm like, oh, this feels new, like, I feel like I'm rediscovering things, I've been here for ages, but because of like shut that part off so much, I'm like, oh, fun.
No, I, I mean, I haven't been on MCCI, I mean, I've been very much out of like a Minecraft phase for a while, and so I probably hadn't been on MCCI in like five months. Um.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of it different because obviously you know MCC so much better than I do, but like I am like also being like, oh, I remember this thing, or like, I'm learning about this now.
It, it's fun seeing what muscle memory you still have.
Yes, agreed. I, I, apparently I had no muscle memory cuz I didn't know how to do any of it, um, but I have learned.
That's good then.
Uh, but no, yeah, to answer, long answer, I'm good with doing anything.
Okay.
It's up to you guys.
Probably do, I think we'll probably just do a mix of everything, like we can just do a few games on MCCI, we can also do a few things that parkour tag and that on the uh, server? Cuz that's all up with the new games and all that, and there's a new map for parkour tag that looks cool.
Oh, um, the one thing, I'm glad I thought of this, the one thing I didn't know was, um grid, grid runners.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because of JoJo, I now know Sands of Time because she's obsessed with it. Um. And uh, what, mm, Meltdown?
Yeah.
Is that it? Those are the two I don't know.
Okay, so Meltdown is kind of like, have you ever seen like Valorant or CS:GO?
Yes, so like, like an FPS kind of game?
Yeah, so it's kind of like that where like we have spawn rooms, we sort of move in to try and capture points in a map that's like shrinking. But we have like one, so if you get shot, you freeze. And then your team can defrost you or melt you by putting down a heater next to you.
Okay. I'm, I may have seen this before then.
Yeah. It's basically just like ball shots, like that's the main component is aiming with your ball, as long as you can do that, you're fine. Um, and then grid runners It's a, it's a simple game to understand, once you play like a round, you'll be like, okay, I get what we're doing now, like
Okay.
Um, and again, the main thing is like having a clear shot caller, which I'm sure will be purpled, like is helpful, cuz then if someone's like, okay, we're moving now, we're going in here, like it helps make it easier to understand.
Yeah.
And then Grid Runners is sort of like a bunch of mini games. They're all kind of focused on team communication, um, so like the better we communicate with each other, the better we will do in them. Um. Cuz there's like one game where it's like we'll all be in our own little compartments and we have a painting we need to replicate, um. But we don't have the right amount of blocks, but each other will maybe have each other's blocks, you have to like pass them through and sort of be like, oh, do you have any copper or yeah, I need iron, like kind of pass it back and forward.
I see, that sounds fun, I, I like the like more team game kind of stuff. So, I think, I think that'll be fun.
Yeah, team-based games are my favorite type of stuff.
Yeah.
I think that's when you kind of get to just like have fun and like work together, um, and if your synergies and vibes have been good, it's a fun game.
Okay.
It also tends to be played quite early because people don't know when it, like what it'll be, cuz there's obviously so many components in it, so it tends to be a early game, which means very little stress.
Okay, I like that.
Like realistically with the event, the first like three, four games don't actually matter. Um, so like if we have a bad start, it's fine because the way the coin multiplier works. Um. You could get like, if you, as long as you do well in the last set of games, you'll make up the coin difference. Obviously, if you do well in the first half, great, it gives you like an extra padding kind of thing to make it, um. But the advantage of the coin multiplier is like, you can, as long as you've not been like getting zero coins, you can pretty much always make it a dodgeball.
Okay. We, we got, we got this.
Yeah.
I've been saying, I'm, I'm just here for the vibes.
Honestly, same.
I, I'm not, I'm not expecting to be the like breakthrough star that no one expects, and then is like, what, they're great at this, I'm not expecting that, I'm just here to hang.
Like Rocky training montage.
Yeah, I'm not expecting that, oh, hello.
Hello. Hello, hello, hello.
How are you?
Oh, I'm tired, but I'm okay, how is everyone? How are we all feeling?
Good, also tired.
Yes, I did, however, going outside was my mistake because I've got just the worst headache. Um, so I'm vibing with it, but it's okay, it's okay because I, I'll play so well, it's gonna be fine. It's gonna be so fine.
What movie did you go see?
Uh, the new Marvel film.
Oh, I wanna go see that so bad, I love, I love Florence Pugh.
At Purpled, you're up. Alright, hold on.
Yeah, well, you said, you said DM when we were ready, so.
Okay, 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 okay. Um, hold on, hold on.
Do you wanna play on the event server first? Cuz there's actually quite a few mini games on here. There's like parkour tag, which is played, um, there's Battle Box.
Yeah, we can do.
The Battle Box, we would actually need another team, so maybe we do like parkour tag in that first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on, hold on, on my way.
Go ahead and also open this.
Did you just get your launcher set up with the stuff in the info, okay?
Is that an Amy question or an Amy question?
Both of you.
I, I think I did, yeah.
Wait, is that new stuff?
The stuff that was put in like last week or something.
Thank you for saying that, one moment, please.
It's quite simple, it says that.
Okay.
Mine's been working so far, so I think I did something right.
Okay, good.
Oh, I see. Okay, hold on. Oh wait, what in the world? Wait, I'm gonna do this now, one sec, stay there.
Okay. I wasn't really planning going anywhere, I'm lying.
I don't, I don't know where we're expected to go.
Yeah, like, uh, did you want us to leave or?
Just stands up and walks away.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're, we're going on the actual, the main server?
Yeah, just go on the main server.
My, my biggest fear has been leaking the IP, IP, you have no idea the amount of stress every time I log in. I like, don't show the game until I'm in the game.
That's funny.
Constant fear.
Honestly, like, I, I appreciate it. I think we probably have protections in that chance cuz you're not the only, uh, streamer that would do that, so.
Yeah.
And honestly, the fact that you're so much thinking about it means you probably won't it's one, it's one thing I've been never looking that I need to worry about.
Yeah. No, I, I, I was like, if I leak it, it's gonna be my first and my last MCC.
To be fair, Tubbo has leaked, Tubbo has leaked so much and he's still in, so.
Oh, well, it's Tubbo, of course he did.
Uh, yeah, that's part of his brand.
I, I knew, I knew him for a good ten minutes and he gave me his phone number, so.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm not surprised.
I will probably be able to do team practice for like an hour, an hour and a half.
Okay.
Um.
That should be good for me.
Very warm in the UK, like the last few days, um, which means it's very warm with my lights and my PC on, so.
Oh, I see.
There's a time out before I perspire and die.
Just melt.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I feel like we've like switched weather because it's like cold and overcast in LA.
Oh, yeah, you've got it for a change.
Yes, thank god.
Our version of hot is probably still like your version of cold, like it's only like twenty-one degrees Celsius for us.
No, I, 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 cuz I know a lot of people who live in England and especially in Brighton and they were like they were like, it's so hot here, and I was, they told me the equivalent of it and I was like, that's our daily weather here.
Oh, we're talking about the weather, don't get me started, do not get me started, it's too hot.
No, but I, but it's so cold here right now and I feel like we switched.
It's boiling, it's bloody boiling and I hate it. It's, oh, it's ridiculous. I don't like it, I don't, I don't like it.
We're gonna invade the server and we'll do parkour tag.
Oh, hi there.
Need to wiggle my settings, hold on. Uh, okay.
How are we feeling, team? Are we ready?
I'm, I'm feeling good.
Hello.
I'm all ready.
Hi, Purpled.
Yeah.
Hi. Hi, guys.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hold on, hold on. Oh my god, my settings are all out of whack, hold on. Okay. Okay, now I'm okay, no, I'm not, yeah, no, I'm okay.
Okay.
Oh my god, the server looks so weird.
Yeah, teleport to parkour tag. Yeah, teleport to parkour tag.
Oh, this is so strange. Okay, alright, I'm here. Alright, oh, your little crown.
Wait, I won the last event too.
Oh wait, really? Look at your crown, you little flexer. Look at this guy, look at this guy.
I can choose to have.
I feel like it's a little excessive.
I hate to say that, the gold matches the blue. Okay, it looks terr- it looks terrible.
Thank you, thank you.
What is this map? Is this, oh, this is a new one. I haven't done this one yet.
Neither have I, that's why I was excited to.
Is there, okay, okay, wait.
You'll probably have the orb in that as well.
Oh, yeah, the orb.
I'm, I'm helping, I'm giving this to you to teach sons how to do this because I don't even know how to do this.
Watch out.
That's like the, like the meteor going to the dinosaurs and they hit it, you go, oh no, watch out, no.
They're already, the dinosaurs are already dead and he's like, oh, by the way. By the way, you should maybe look up.
Where are you, pal?
Oh, there's, uh, to your left, to your left.
Oh, I'm not gonna make this. Never mind, I lied.
A normal flying angle. I kinda have to like watch from the stands to try to, try to call out here, but. They have a one game percentage? Right behind you, right behind you, right behind you, right behind you. I'm like trying to get a good angle, but you, you guys are like ducking in tunnels and I'm like, I, I don't know.
God, I've not played parkour tag in so long, Jesus Christ.
I feel like parkour tag never gets played. Parkour tag is so fun.
It is so fun. It's just so stressful.
There's something like, I don't know if it has like innate childlike about being chased in Minecraft, like it feels like.
It's also for me, like, I have such a positive like memory of it, because it was my first, it was game one of my first MCC, so it's like. That was like, it was like so exciting for me.
I'm gonna say something bad.
Um, Angie's coming towards me. I don't exactly know where Angie is.
You're both on the same side, so you may wanna try and cut.
Yeah, I'm trying, I think Angie's, Angie, come on, you're coming, you're coming.
That was terrifying.
Yeah, they're gonna cut you. Yeah, good turnaround, good turnaround, keep going. They're right behind you, they're right behind you.
Oh, I got tripped. It's over, it's over.
You're doing so good. Just keep moving back. If you can get up at any.
Oh my god.
Whatever, lucky. You've got, you got lucky, pal. You got lucky. That's, it's, parkour tag literally gives me fight or flight. Like, I feel like I'm going to have a heart attack.
You wanna go Suns?
I can.
We'll save the scariest for last.
Oh god.
It's so refreshing to play on a different parkour tag map, because I feel like those two practice ones, like. It was like we overtrained on them, you know?
They were also like the old parkour tag map, so they were a lot smaller.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This one's like, I think a lot more doable.
I recognize.
Um, still on the ground, coming towards you, Angie.
Yeah, follow you, Amy.
Kinda towards you, Angie again.
Suns, how are you feeling with parkour?
I actually have been working a ton on, uh, on parkour.
Do I, I can just see Suns at all times. Is that a glitch? I, you're always glowing for me.
Not glowing for me, so probably a glitch.
It was, it was working in the last couple rounds, but Suns is just glowing. Maybe it does. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. I'm back.
There we go. Um, that. Used to be my worst game. It's, it's so stressful.
It could be a lunar client thing maybe, but I don't know. It was better. I, they said one point twenty, one point five had the new Noxium, I think, but. If it happens again, yeah, I'll switch, because it was, it was working fine before. I guess I'm not gonna know this time, because I'm a hunter.
You just tend to see us at all.
Yeah, well, actually, to be fair, I, only Suns is glowing for me right now, so. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to lock in. Oh, nevermind, you're, you're all glowing now, you're all glowing now. Okay, we're good, we're good, we're good.
I was like, this is not good for me.
Yeah, not for Suns. Suns was our sacrificial lamb, but.
Dang it.
Oh, I fell. Okay, well.
He's coming out for you, he's coming out for you.
You suck, you suck, you suck.
I'm sorry, I'm really sorry.
Uh, he's right under, he's right behind you.
Whatever, man.
I'll hunt again.
Um, Suns, are you comfortable with like using the uh, the orb and like checking behind you with F5 and stuff?
The, uh, are you saying using the orb to teleport?
Um, and well, at, when you're a runner, you can, you have that little ender pearl, you can click to, or maybe I have ender. Um, to see where the hunter is.
Yeah, you can toggle, so basically the ender pearl we have, Suns, if you look at me, you, you can basically uh toggle this, so we get to have a moment of visibility. Uh, to see where Scott is, but then it goes away, basically.
Okay, I feel like probably yes with the pearl, not with F5.
Yeah, that's okay. I think for the, I think the pearl is the most important thing, just being able to. Oh, right, right on you, Angie. Right behind, he's on, on the ground still, oh.
You suck. My toes and all, you're terrible.
Oh, Scott's coming towards me. Oh, there's a hole there. I did not know there's a hole there.
The result is fine, I'm back. Oh, you fell? How did you get down here?
No! I'm so scared.
Oh my gosh.
Oh, I'm alive.
I tunneled too hard.
This map is like very, I don't, there's so many ways to get up and down on this map. I kinda like it.
That scared me.
Suns just ran to me. Suns is like, okay, he's only got one, I'll go down.
Yeah, there, I think, um, Suns, a general word of advice, just, uh, like right now, we're, we are like messing around, so we have ba- bad comms, but what we're gonna try to do in the real thing is. A, always like stay as far apart from each other as runners as we can. Um, and then also try to stagger our ender pearl usage, because each one of us has like a fifteen second cooldown or something on it. But if we like each time them regularly, we can just communicate with where the hunter is, which is very helpful. Angie's coming towards me.
Yep, it does also mean if you're in a hunter game, um.
Both, oh, oh, right up, oh, right behind you, Scott, right behind you, Scott.
Oh god.
I hate this. This is my childhood trauma with that stupid song.
High ground is also usually really good in parkour tag. Also coming towards you, Suns, coming towards you. Um, high ground is usually really, really good, so when you can, if the hunter's not on you, try to use the opportunity to get high ground. Right behind you, right behind you.
Oh my god, parkour tag gives me stress.
Try running from you.
Oh, it's post.
They're right behind you.
Oh, good, good cutoff, good cutoff.
Good, good cutoff, yeah.
Oh my gosh.
I like this map. This map is fun.
This map is very fun.
Is it, is it me for hunter?
Uh, I think so, you're Suns.
What other games are on this practice server?
There's quite a few, I think.
There's a lot.
There's a, yeah, there's a battle box, but we're better doing that on island where we could, let's start doing two V2s, but.
I may not be on for too long, only because my headache has now spread to my tooth. Um, and I've got the worst toothache that is for some reason, but I'll be on for it. Did you just die? Stop that.
I could burn a corner and he was just there. I got purple, jumped scared.
No, no, no.
You're gonna turn, you're gonna turn, you're gonna turn.
I've never turned in my life.
I'm trying to like play for the possible turn, but I don't wanna commit too hard.
You suck. Oh my god.
He's scary, right? He's just a bear.
It is scary. And I, I hear footsteps behind me, but I don't know exactly where they're coming from.
Purple, you're third on the, on the board already. One game percentage, seventy-one percent.
I feel like that, what, what if you just get on with your friend when no one else is on and you just grind that? You like ninety-nine percent.
Uh, do you wanna play? What do we fancy? What else is there?
What, yeah, what is there? Parkour warrior, we're good on that.
Suns, what is, what is the game that you're most nervous for?
Um, probably Sky Battle, honestly, because I'm just not good, I'm just not good with PvP.
I can go into island if we want and play some Sky Battle and stuff.
I'm down. I've, one thing I've, oh, is that me lagging or you?
That was you lagging. I hear your little voice go a bit weird.
What's going on? Um, I hope, I hope that doesn't happen in the actual event. Um, one thing I noticed with Sky Battle in real events is it is like. I wouldn't stress too much about the PvP aspect of it, because more than anything, it's just like sticking together as a team and like. Positioning yourself well with like building and stuff. And then at, assuming your team is alive in the last thirty seconds, then everything kinda breaks loose and there's like PvP there, but for the most part. There's not like too many instances of like you having to take a one V one or anything.
Yeah, a lot of the time it is genuinely just trying to stay alive versus actually trying to get kills. Um, obviously, when you play on island, you're just trying to get kills and trying to win, but in the actual event, it's so unpredictable. Because i- it, within a second, everyone's kind of at each other and it's very easy uh to get kills in that moment. Uh, I, uh, it's, like, it's very fun in the event, um, because it goes from zero to a hundred, it's great.
Yeah, I'd say like, MCCI Island Sky Battle is, it is the same game, but in terms of how it's played, it's completely different, like. There's just people like running it down, just trying to get kills and stuff, but in the real thing, it's, yeah, you stay alive, you keep your numbers. Partially just to be scary, because like, if one or two of the team dies early, then we're just like instantly a target. Late game, but if we have all four alive, late game, then we're pretty good and then, and then we can just crit people out. Win the game.
Why do you have a box on your head?
Bro, it's my cosmetic. Aren't I lovely? I love, I love my co- I got all the nicest cosmetics. I got such random ones. I don't even remember what I've got. I love my little box. Okay, I'm locking in.
I was worried they fixed the offhand block thing, which is awesome.
Was that a problem?
Yeah, it's like offhanding blocks, there's like a slight chance when you click that it just doesn't place and you fall and die.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
It was, it was like super like one in a hundred at, at, at least, but you know. Oh, I found they changed the spawn eggs, the textures.
Projectile, quick all poison.
There's an R team that way.
Yeah, let's go, let's go this way.
Honestly, Suns, in games like this, the co- the normal calm is probably gonna just be follow purpled or follow Scott.
Oh yeah, I said, I was like, I already said, I was like, it will be purple telling us what to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good to know.
Um, I guess, oh, there's someone there already, but let me know if they.
They've not turned around yet, they're in a chest, they're just going, they're just over there.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go up over them, honestly.
They were on their way out.
Yeah, yeah, I see, um, they're trying to go, yeah, they, they left, they left. Um, I think we're chilling. We don't have the best of gear, but I don't really know where we could get some. Oh, they didn't kills. Oh, you can't place on slabs.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I see, I see.
No, I, I killed them back, because I. I ran at them and he panicked, turned around and failed. I'm just that scary.
I'm assuming there's no chests in here that are unlocked. Let me double check though.
Oh, he's about TNT cannoners.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
We're not good, we're not good, we are not.
I told you, I told you he was good at TNT cannons.
Oh my god.
Um, there's, is that just a team at two over to our right? The, the, the line?
Yeah, because one of them fell into the void and the other one.
Okay, well, someone's pushing them right now, I might. Hmm, there's a guy up there.
He's the one who TNT cannon does.
Yeah, is he alone?
Uh, yeah, his other team is dead.
Oh, he's trying to TNT cannon, what, careful, careful TNT, careful TNT.
I finally got to go for like an RV raid siren that was a little more too.
That was scary. Oh, I did not think there's a, I did not think he was down there. I, I backed up, I backed up. Oh no.
Like you were there?
Uh, yeah, the flash box again for when I was there.
Yeah, when you were in the mine, when you were in the mine.
When I was in the blunts.
That's so funny. The same guy got you that got me, so you know what? It's not all, not all is wrong, you know?
That guy has so much healing.
Go on, Suns. It's okay, it's okay.
This guy low.
You sound like my brain whenever I've died. It's okay, it's okay.
It's fine, we're gonna be okay, it's fine.
Excuse me. Oh, sorry buddy.
There's one right above you. Yeah, you'll see him, uh, he's, oh, he's on, he's on for you.
Oh, I'm kinda not in the best spot admittedly, but it's okay.
You're lasted way longer than us.
Third place. Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll take that. Oh, this game stresses me out.
For me, build mark is like, I think the most constant stress of a game. That's the thing where I was looking at like the games that were in, I was looking at like our team stats for them. I was like, man, I suck at build mark, but then I was like, wait. I have Scott on my team. And everything is better now.
You can just do as you're told and it'll be fine.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I can craft fast. I, I speedrun sometimes, so just give me items, like I can be the crafter, the builder, I can be the, the block getter, I can be. Whatever, as long as, I don't have to think.
Yeah, probably someone who has played it before can be our block gatherer, just because obviously imagine sending, they've been sending.
I, I'm, I'm good with being a block gatherer as well.
For, I think I was, so I was talking to JoJo the other day and she said for Sky Battle, MCCI is normally more aggressive. Whenever MCC is people just building bases, is that correct?
Oh yeah, a hundred percent. Like, if you, like in MCC Sky Battle, it'll be like a minute of the game left and like thirty out of forty people are still alive. Like, it's gonna be, everyone's alive until the very last second when all hell breaks loose and everyone fights, essentially. Be careful, careful of bows on the bridge.
Hey guys.
There's a, a chest right here with some stuff. Scott, where'd you go? Power bow or punch bow, sorry.
They're bombing us.
They're bombing you. Uh, iron sword, I have an iron sword for someone.
Yeah, I have an iron sword for someone else as well. Come on, sorry, that was me. Uh, there's an.
Oh, there's a guy trying to come to me.
Already got one, but.
Dude, how about not? Oh my god, I thought he was dead like three times. I have an extra diamond sword for you, Scott. Here you go.
Where in the world did you go?
We are, we are vertical.
Yeah, oh my gosh, we're all in a different flag.
We are vertical. Here you go. Here's a iron sword if anyone needs. And there's also a punch bow in this chest if anyone wants it.
We're just going up and up and up, this is great. Okay, right, what's happening here?
There's no one in the building.
One of the team next to us pushed and died on the left, but I don't know, I don't know where they went. Okay, yeah, I see them. There's a big fight over there. I just want eating, someone's below me, someone's below. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me and Suns are on the way.
One dead, there's another though, coming up. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, I died.
Where in the world are you?
They've just disappeared.
Purple is, yeah, purple.
We're around.
We're at the top!
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Dude, there's bow shots whipped, oh my goodness.
You're ceiling bartering.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Me and Sons are.
Oh, there's another guy right there, oh no!
Oh no, no, no!
Oh my god.
Just give us like ten minutes.
You're okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
You're gonna need to start back down, because there's a ceiling barter.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm head down, I'm head down.
This, this is the worst support team ever, give us a minute, hold on.
Sons going through the window, go back to that.
All you do is stay alive, and I'll get to you guys.
Alright.
Okay, we are on the corners of the map, but it's okay.
There, there's a team fighting, or, yep, okay, um.
Is that guy low?
Yeah.
Right is on his own and he's low, um, and he's the, and then you've got Raz wherever he is.
If you guys can maybe get to middle, I'm kind of like making a little thing here.
The, the two low people are in the same area, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I just followed behind you.
My right, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, the two low people are fighting, the two low people are fighting.
Uh, is it over here? Yeah, yeah, I see that, I see that. Okay, they, they need to come from here, just, do you guys have bows, if you guys have bows, just be ready.
Yeah, you know what, building the rest of it, right?
Watch, watch this guy, yeah, bro, I'm punching. Careful of like a levy, yeah, I see, I see someone down here. Is this one?
Yep.
Okay, keep, right down here. Hit once. Hit twice. Three times, four times.
He has like.
Oh, fancy.
Um, I'm out of arrows.
He's so low, he's got one heart, two hearts, three hearts. Three.
Oh, nice.
Ah! You put five, four?
Yep, yep, yep. Carefully, he's bombing us.
Oh, there, 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 yeah!
Let's go, GGs.
And we'll repeat that.
Every, yeah, exactly, every single round is gonna be like that now.
Yeah.
Just us running up a building.
Exactly, the support.
I know, like, unironically, I think a lot of times in Sky Battle, like, there might be times where I like, go away to make like a solo play that I see, and if you guys just stay alive for the end game, then it's just like, very impactful, I think. Like, because there are times where I need to like sneak away to do something, but having you guys alive there made that end complete, like, completely winnable, otherwise it would've been a lot harder, so.
Hmm.
I think that's like perfect, basically. Like, your only goal is to stay alive and gather resources.
Yep. The points you get from staying alive is literally crazy.
Yeah, and just the fear factor of having more people, because like, yeah.
The minute that it's like, oh my god, wait, no, Blue's only got one person, it's like suddenly it's over, so they're having like, oh no, they've got four, it's like they'll stay away from you, it's great.
Exactly. Exactly.
Exactly, exactly. Alright, alright, alright. How you feeling, Sons, with this game?
Good.
Good.
I'm just trying to remember that MCC is not half as aggressive.
Oh yeah, no, trust me, it's literally like, it's like so slow, it's like tense. Oh, watch out, there's a hole there.
Just silence.
Why would you, why would you, why would you say that, right behind you?
I don't like that map.
What is, oh my.
Got you, my, my, my.
No! Support team's down.
Watch out, creep, 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 creep.
That's, oh my god, Purple, you're in crazy.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks.
Oh my gosh. Scott, you got this?
He's a nice, he's like building up, just in no danger at all.
I got a kill.
You got it, Scott, yeah!
Oh, there's people coming in the building, uh, behind, up, above.
Right on me, on me, on me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave, I'm going to leave. Hey, chill, chill, chill on me, chill on me, chill on me, chill on me.
Oh, yes, Scott, yes, Scott, use that levitation, work it, yes! These good comms.
Sorry, Purple, you're on your own.
No, you're good, he's, this guy's doing some shenanigans over here.
More shenanigan.
I love when this VC gets into locked-in mode.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm playing completely solo right now. I don't even, is this guy still following me? Yeah, he is.
Yeah, he's right, he's right below you.
This guy wants me so bad, chill out. Dude, there's like three of them, oh my gosh, I did not realize. Scott, save me!
What are you, me save you? I don't know what I am! Oh, god!
No!
No!
I think I was being hunted down like a wounded gazelle.
Oh no!
Oh no. I can hear you guys. Oh, hello. Hello!
Hi, we can hear you.
Yeah, I just watched your teleport on the map and I was like, okay?
Happens.
He had to turn on the hat.
That's just, you learn that once you become S tier, you learn how to do that.
Oh, I see, I see, it's like a state of mind, I see.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
There's someone over, the yellow, attacking me over there.
Um, to be quite frank, I'm not sure what my play is here.
Hmm.
Okay, Feinberg.
Is that just Feinberg on a?
No, I don't think so.
Really?
I, I don't think so.
It's just for the skin, but I don't know, yeah.
Wish I had more arrows.
Oh, oh.
Dude, Feinberg down here, he wants me, bro.
He wants that cookie so bad, he wants it.
I don't know where you guys are getting all these arrows from.
Uh, he's up, he's coming over, or no, he's, he's at the top.
Why is this golden chest still? Oh, well, there's all the arrows.
Coming into the.
Could the border get a lot of them?
Um, it won't necessarily get them, but it'll definitely pressure them to do something.
Also, I will say, like I just did at the start of this round, there will be at least two people, or even like one person that will die from the void. Uh, it happens every single MCC.
Happens.
They just fall immediately.
I wonder who that would be, that wasn't directed at you, that was self-deprecating. That wasn't directed at you.
You'll, you'll have, you'll have the craziest, like, you, you will be following, it's okay, don't worry, we'll make sure the bridge is, uh, so, you're not able to fall at all.
I said, I said that and I was like, they're gonna think I meant them.
How dare you!
Yellow's there.
Who do you think you are?
The other one's really low down there.
He can't touch you, he can't touch you, there is a fire.
I'm trying to.
One of these, oh.
Yeah, I don't.
Falling off, he's done the button, he fell off, you're, you're winning, you're winning.
That's not what I meant to do.
Oh, okay, let it go. Trying to bomb me, did this?
What's above you, jump down?
That was.
That was, you're actually frack, it's crazy. Oh my god, what do you mean?
That was crazy!
Like, what, how does your brain work like that? I don't get it.
There's too many hours in Minecraft, man, too much time.
I don't, like, you just do things, like, you don't even think about it, you just instinctively do them, and it's.
Yeah.
That was amazing.
I appreciate it. Thank you, team.
You wanna do some battle box?
Yeah, I'm done forever.
We'll do one, we'll do one more.
Yeah, I'll do more, yeah. I probably won't be on for much longer, my tough is killing me, there's only so much parasite a mole can do. And I'm over here just having an absolute heart attack, it's great, it's fine, we're like so chill. Okay.
This map is like, there's so many tiny islands, it's very easy to get around in this map.
Hmm.
Just be careful. Um, also in purple chest, there's gonna be something for everyone on the team, so always just grab like your little thing and then, leave the rest. If I was playing solo, I would take all things for myself because I'm greedy, but because I'm with my team, I will always leave.
For us?
I will. Random players, MCC Islands, they don't deserve those arrows, but my MCC team, yeah.
Oh, stop it, you.
Oh, there's a guy right up front, oh my god! Um, careful, there's a guy, Enzy up there shooting at us.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see.
I think we might, it might be the play to go to where Scott is, honestly. Kind of like it over here. Very chill.
I have diamond, I have diamond pants, which I'll put back in this chest here, um, the diamond pants in this chest. And a lava bucket if you want.
I have a diamond sword for someone. I have two diamonds.
Scott, you want to take it? Oh, I'll take one.
I know you have it, you have it.
Here's, here one, okay, and here's one, Sons, diamond sword behind you.
There you go.
Where?
Uh, I think Enzy picked it up.
Wait, I've only got one, wait, I've only got one!
That's crazy.
Right, now perfectly.
No, you can have it as fine.
There's a, there's a blue guy over here, oh, another diamond sword, they, dude, they're giving out these things like, like it's nothing.
Like it's nothing. There you go.
Um, there's a guy right above me right here that is looking at me, and he wants to throw a creeper on me.
Yep, he did it, fellow.
Yeah. He's gonna TNT us.
Yep.
Get his ass.
That was a, oh, that actually, watch out, he's right above you, right above you!
Yeah, oh, that hurt. Alright.
Watch out, lava, lava, lava! Okay, we need to go, border, 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 we need to go here, follow me.
You've got this, guys, you're doing amazing.
Um, let's go up.
There's a lame person, yeah, lame person's also going up. They're going up onto the tree as well.
Yeah, I see him, I see him.
He's so low, he's trying to lava bucket?
I'm low as well.
He's gone into the water for some.
Make sure to always be eating steak anytime you lose any hunger, Sons as well. You always want to have that saturation up. How many arrows do you have?
Uh, six, do you want them? Because I can't.
Um, I mean, I have four, so I'm good.
They've fallen into lava and then they've water bucketed themselves, they've died, uh, don't worry, that was really embarrassing to watch, actually.
This, this guy under us is gonna have to go eventually, so I kind of want to.
He's dead, he's the one.
No, there's another guy right here. Is, am I teleporting or is this guy teleporting? There's a guy right here, careful. What's he gonna throw at me? Look, he's on the, okay.
He's coming over you.
Um, let's see, well, it's a, it's a, it's a two-v-one, yeah, it's us versus him, it's us versus this one guy. Just stick together.
He's there, he's there.
Yeah, yeah. He has an axe, he's gonna want to get a crit off.
Are you full?
Well, nice. That's all it is. That is all it is.
What's your, like, Purple, what is your best game?
Uh, like, uh, that's actually a good question, in terms of average placement,
Hmm.
maybe rockets, please? But I, I don't know, maybe two there aside, actually.
Hmm, oh yeah, 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 yeah.
One of the two, let me check.
Somebody want to explain the kits to Sons here?
I actually, I don't know much about the kits. I asked JoJo and she goes, whatever you feel like, and I was like, okay!
I'm like, I'll do anything!
I was like, I don't know what to do.
To be fair, they, they won't be kits in like the actual event?
Yeah, it's a little different.
I'm just gonna do that, that's what I did last time.
Um, alrighty. Woo, oh, it's this map, okay.
I hit one.
Oh, I found the lava.
Well, okay.
I don't want to talk about it, I don't want to talk about it.
I watched that right in front of me.
Oh! Got this, Sons?
Did he? No, he's not down here.
Right.
Alright, Scott.
So don't say that again.
Nice.
I'll never say you get anything again.
One behind you, uh, but two behind, two behind, Scott. Dead? Another one to our right?
People behind, yeah.
Uh, I died, I think I'm gonna crossbow.
Okay.
You've got this, you're better, you're better, you're him. He's gappled, he's got half HP.
There's someone, yeah.
He's going up, he's going up, he's almost like, he's going, seven point five, he's going to the middle, he's in the middle. Oh, there's two of them, himself? Where were they? Where did they come, where did they spawn in the front?
Second guy.
Since when? Yeah.
All good.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, uh, just Amy, don't, don't fall in the lava, yep, like you can talk.
Do not fall in the lava, whatever you do.
You're one to give that tip.
There's, there's three, there's three on the right, one on the left.
As I say, not as I do. Ew, kills one.
Nice.
Oh, they're making me blind, rude. Yeah, me too.
Oh, right, yeah, oh, whoa, hello, goodbye.
Oh, in the middle.
I'm dead.
Oh!
Come, bind, 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 bind her.
Nope. That didn't work.
I'm dead, all dead, all dead, all dead. I think, yeah, all dead.
Nice job!
That scared me!
Nice.
That's okay, that's okay.
Sons, do you know, um, like, how to time to get crits in, with swords?
Uh, with, you wait for the bar to fill up, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It's usually, it's pretty much like the same speed as your jump, like,
Okay.
If you're like holding down spacebar, it's like, bang, bang. You also have to be on the way down when you hit it to crit.
Okay.
Be falling.
Oh!
There's one guy in this right. Nice, thank you.
Sorry, I got your kill.
No, I was possibly gonna die there, so I don't mind. Um, I don't really know what we do here.
Is one on the side you were on?
Hit him once.
I got in the lava again, are you, I've missed three times!
This guy's, this guy's one HP, he's dead.
There we go.
One behind, mine, 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 mine!
You're going down, you're going down, that's good.
Nice.
Yeah!
I think that's everyone. Question mark? Yeah, that's everyone.
Oh, I followed, so that was a good thing.
All good. Yay! Yay!
Amy, hyper's, hyper's in here making fun of you.
Of course, hyper is. Hyper, get a job! Go, go outside! Grass! Absolute loser. I'm sorry, hyper, please don't be mad at me, I'm sorry.
Whoa.
I'm sorry, hyper. I've got a toothache, I've got a toothache, you know? I've got a toothache, it's not, I'm not on a good day, okay? Please be nice, I'm sorry.
That's crazy.
Uh, can't play MCC Island when I have a toothache. You know what they say?
It took me far too long to realize you were saying the word tooth.
What, what do you think I'm saying?
It sounds like you're saying tough.
Yeah, it does sound like you're saying tough.
I'm Welsh, you all suck.
I know, that was why I was saying it took me about it to understand what you were saying.
Aw, thank you, you're trying to understand me, I appreciate that.
I'm, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put that in my book.
Yeah, it's the same thing I do with food as well, though.
Yeah.
Like, it's my, it's OO, it's the way we say OO in Wales.
See, I say tooth.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I don't, I say tough, tough, uh, tough face, toothache. I don't know why. Look at you.
Let us go.
Let us do this.
Oh, there's a lava pool, Jesus Christ!
Didn't like that, did not think that you're not like... What in the...
Oh, careful, careful, careful.
Okay, I'm getting absolutely bodied.
Oh my god, I can't see you!
Oh wait, we have massive knockback, I didn't realize.
I think we do, I did not realize that, yeah, I did not realize.
There's a guy in the middle?
I think we all have knockbacks, or...
Yeah, you need to drop them into lava.
No, guys, guys, I'm being...
You got it, you're good, oh.
Okay, so now we understand why none of those ones is to throw people back into lava.
That's fun!
Do all, did every single sword have knockback?
I think so.
Think so?
Two, knockback two, holy cow, that changes everything. Oh my gosh. Okay.
Do people normally take like, two on each side kinda thing?
Um, it's, yeah, usually, but it depends as well.
I've got a Saffronberg guy.
Yeah.
Oh no.
I will say, everyone is over here.
Yeah, 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 you are alone over there.
I love that.
Okay, brood, ow.
I got you, I got you.
Let's go. Oh, I got one of them? Okay, one of them got me!
Alright, I got one of them.
Jump critted out. And it's just you and the Saffronberg clone who's behind you.
I wanna hit him in the lava!
Oh, my, my, you need...
No!
I was like, I recognize that skin.
Yep.
Okay, here we go, right.
It'll haunt your dreams on Saturdays well, don't worry.
But flying big, don't now, don't even do it.
Knockback two and Battlebox is like, a little funky, I'm gonna...
I shouldn't say, I, it doesn't feel like I'm playing Battlebox, like this doesn't...
Dude, you can't, you can't like combo someone, you get like one hit and they go flying backwards.
It's very strange.
Behind you, Scott, behind you, Scott, behind you, Scott! One dead? Oh, one's invisible.
Oh my god, oh my god!
No! Dude, I literally go flying with a single hit, like you can't...
I can't even like get myself back up, it's so...
Holy cow.
Holy!
I'm just gonna queue this, cause we're already done already. Um, I don't think we really need to see the stat board at the end of this one.
I think we're, I think we're good.
I think we're all okay!
I'm gonna save us all from that last place you're in.
Thanks pal, thanks pal.
Wait, so what are the other games that are in? Let me look.
Um...
I'm so excited for Sands of Time, how do we feel about Sands of Time?
Sands of Time? I, I like Sands of Time.
I love Sands of Time, it's one, it's my favorite game.
I have like, I have like a couple strategies throughout the, the time, but I've... I, I don't know. I don't know if they're good or not, because I've never done really well in Sands of Time. I feel like it's tou, like, part of it is just situational, cause sometimes unlucky things happen. But part of it is I think I'm not the best Sands of Time player, so we will see.
Hopefully, I would, I would rather get Sands of Time done in the first half of the event, which means it has like more stakes.
So down for that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I think makes sense having like, Suns who's never played.
Yeah.
Yes.
As much as I love it, I would, yeah, it makes complete sense.
I'm getting a bunch of VODs sent to me from JoJo because she's the expert.
I love it.
JoJo's so good at Sands.
Yep.
Crazy. I just tried to TNT cannon someone that doesn't exist. I'm not over there, buddy.
Someone's pretty low in spawn, in that spawn.
Uh, I am not in a position to, oh no.
Sorry.
Got one? I didn't mean to do that. No, I'm dead! No! Is there supposed to be a scoreboard on the side of my screen right now? Cause I didn't notice a scoreboard.
There should be.
I nearly ended, I should, like, I was so close to ending, just filling it, I was like... Realistically, we're here for the PvP practice, not the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I always get, I always like, forget that when I'm doing training for this, where I'm like, no, I need to, I, I don't need to know how to fill in the grid, I, I'm good at that. I just need to do this.
Like, it's a good skill to have on reserve for like, in the event, like to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh my god, yeah.
Oop, ouchie.
Ow! Ow, my god!
I'm up in their spawn, I'm in their spawn, I'm in their spawn.
There's so many of them coming.
Dude, they're just, they're just running infinitely this way.
Yep.
Oh my god, he's invisible.
They ju, they just like ran around as a group, of four.
Yeah, they're, they're in their spawn, I just got absolutely jumped.
Yep, one is by you, purple, there we go. There's one coming there.
Oh great.
You got laggy as well.
Yeah, I need to figure that out, that's, that's a, that's like a problem.
So, I'm also having awful internet issues, it's the reason I'm, I'm literally going home, uh, to Wales tomorrow, because I'm too scared of my internet dipping during MCC.
Oh god.
So, Europe, so I'm going, I'm, I'm gonna be at home, home. But it's fine, we won't, we won't, we, we both, we both won't have issues, hopefully. Just gotta figure it out. Oh, I'm so bad at PvP at the moment. I need to lock back in. Ready, steady?
Okay, we're gonna win this.
Ready, steady. Careful, 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 careful. ouchie. There's one, one bottom mid, ouchie. Oh, I'm just in the worst possible spot.
One of them's quite low, on one of the sides. Couldn't tell you which ones, that's probably not helpful.
Oh, that's just a ladder? I, I don't know where I'm supposed to go right now, I'm so scared. Once, like, so low. Nice try.
You got this, Scott. Never mind. I sa, I saw the other guy jump and I was like, okay, never mind, no, 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 it's okay.
Let's do one more, I think.
So we could have won, and that is what we have to remember, is we could have. Um, keep that in your head, okay?
No, it's time we're saying expectations false when we come in before a live play.
Yeah!
That's the way, that is the way.
No, we've actually, we've actually been preparing offstream a ton, we're actually amazing at this, don't worry, guys.
So like, anyone that's like watching this right now, they're like, "Oh, we're doing..."
So, yeah, we're just playing into Suns' speciality, we're acting, we're acting.
Wow, that's crazy! My god.
We're all gonna be okay. Just lock in.
Oh, don't worry, guys, I can convince everyone that we're actually amazing at this, don't worry.
Oh my god, okay, we'll get a script ready, it's all gonna be fine.
We are chilling. We don't need to convince anything, we'll show them.
In my film classes that I'm doing, I'm just writing a script for MCC where we convince everyone.
See, and there we go!
Yep, it's perfect.
Here we go.
Careful, they can shoot you right off rip. Oh my god, they're just chucking things everywhere.
Oh!
I got one in hope, but I'm gonna die. I feel like we're just getting bent into the same waters for the same...
Oh, there's just a giant ocean here, what is this?
Way down.
Oh, what?
Oh, this map is so interesting!
Amy, just break it, just fell it, just...
That is not what I expected to happen.
They're dropping again, they're dropping again, no!
And we have Dolphins Grace as well.
Oh, what in the world just happened?
I got like, I got like double confused, cause first I jumped in the water, and then I tried to turn around, but I turned around so slow, but it's cause we have Dolphins Grace, so we're like...
Yeah.
Slippery. Yeah, I haven't played MCCI Battlebox in a while, these new, these like, these maps are throwing me off.
Same.
They're a little gimmicky. Dude, we can just go for a swim, whenever you want.
Oh my god. So, is, are there gonna be new maps in the actual event?
Um, I forget what ma, map the Battlebox thing was. It might have been graffiti, or it might have been... Behind you, Suns, behind you! Where is this person?
Oh my god, oh my god!
Well... I've died. Um, you'll find out tomorrow when there's an update video, Amy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Listen, it's been a while, I'm rusty.
Why are we just getting our ass handed to us?
I will say, we, it is, it is the same, uh, group of people every time.
Yeah, and also MCC Island is just, there's just competitive players on here, yeah, so I mean... It's like, it's, it's good for practice in a vacuum, but you, like, yeah, none of this stuff is like at all one-to-one correlation to MCC. Like, people don't play the same, the maps are different, there are no like... I, I just hope not, there's not these like gimmicky maps in the real thing, so...
No. If we ever do the gimmicky maps, they're like few and far between, like when we did the ship one.
Oh, this guy's swimming. What just happened, dude?
So low. Well... Gone, Purple, I believe. They're coming, right?
Yeah, I, oh, I think there's also, I also don't know if that's an MCCI thing, but my, people's name tags are only rendering for me if they're like... Super close. Is that like a normal thing?
Oh.
Like, wait, uh, wait, Scott, step out, wait, stand right there, stand right there. I can't see your name tag right here.
Yeah, no, that's, it's gone for me as well.
Okay, okay, okay. That's fine then. I, I'm, I think I just need to not use Luna for the real thing, cause there's... There are a couple of little things, yeah, there are a couple like tiny things.
Yeah, well, this was fun. I'm excited, looking forward to Saturday.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm super down to, uh, I think beforehand I'll, especially after the update video, I'll make some like light strategies for stuff, but I'll just like... Fill the guys in on those as the game is picked and getting played, cause I think, that's, that's what I've learned over the many MCCs I've been in, is that... In theory, like, uh, meeting a day before MCC and being like, okay, these are all our strategies, in theory, that's a good idea, but in reality... None of us are gonna retain any of that information, and it's gonna stress us out, and like, it's a lot, so...
It's better to just give us, unless it's like something that needed like a weird strategy, which none of us will, like...
Like, I'll be, I'll be on probably like an hour before the actual event, um, and...
I will be around, but I obviously am busy, cause event D, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'll, I'll be free, I've like cleared my Saturday, so...
Yeah, I, I'm, I'll be good. So I'll, especially once the update video comes out, I'll look at stuff. I will, I think one thing is beforehand, especially Suns, is Turtle Run, the Ace Race map. Um, to watch a couple POV's of that, just to get a feel for the map. Um, have you, have you played, um... Ace Race on the practice server, just like to get, or the event server, just to get a feel for it?
I've run through it a ton.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. As long, like, having a feel for it is really good, and then, yeah, I'll find a POV, um... I, I, yeah, I'll find a couple POV's for you to watch, just to get a feel for the map, and I'll, I think it's good to be aware of the shortcuts, but I'll also try to find a POV that just does the main route as well, because, you know, depending on...
Mine are probably good for that, because I, I don't ever do, like, I, 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 I'm pretty average at it, and just seeing, um, seeing the normal route is, is probably a good idea.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I think, probably. But I also like, I know Turtle Run is like a more, I, I think it's a little more parkour focused than... Than some other maps, if I remember correctly. I don't know, I haven't, I haven't watched a VOD in like a while, I'm just going purely off memory here. Also... Uh, redoing our build, what are we doing for our build? I'm not a builder, so...
Oh my god, I forget about the build.
I tend to just do the build like before the event.
Yeah, that's what I, I literally like always forget about it until last second, so my builds are always really bad, so... I literally only remember just now, cause I joined the server to like fly around and look at stuff, and then I was like, oh yeah, there's build, so...
Oh yeah, I forgot about that.
That's the like team, like whenever like, yeah, okay. I, whenever I was running around the training server, I was like, what is this?
Yeah, no, I'm giving that to Scott and Suns, you guys, that, that can be, that can be your guys' thing, you know? I'm good not building.
Um, I think one, one last little bit of information before, so I can start like setting up things, is who do wanna be Sandkeeper for Saturday?
I would love to be, only because it is the only thing I can do. However, I know Suns is new, and obviously, sat, being Sandkeeper is usually the best thing to give to the new player. It's up to Suns, what Suns feel comfortable with. I've just never ran before, so I, I don't even know what you do for running.
I can, I can, I'll watch, um, a VOD or two and just see, like, and just, I'll message you and let you know, um...
That works.
Because I'm chill, I'm chill being runner if I understand it. Or, yeah, being a runner if I understand it, I just...
I think runner, runner and Sandkeeper, I think you're definitely capable of both, it just depends on what you're comfortable with. Um, Sandkeeper, for the most part, is just having good communication, like being very vocal, um, with her, with yelling at us to come back and sand and stuff, and then... Um, if you do choose to be that, I'll like fill you in on like the little details of that, and then if you choose to be a runner, I'll fill you in on the details of like what to look for and things that you can commonly forget. But yeah, either way it works, I think, um... So, yeah, I'm down for it. Let me, let me look at the games, make sure there's nothing else. I have questions.
Honestly, yes, and you just watch some VODs, um, and then you just give me a text, and we can, and you let me know what you're comfortable and what you're not comfortable with, and we can, we can roll with that.
Okay, I'll do that.
Do you, um, I, I, and also have you, do you just like, I'm just making sure, cause it's your first time, have you, do you have like an understanding of all the games, all nine games that are in on Saturday?
Wait, let me check. Um, I'm pretty sure...
When are we gonna wanna skip?
We are gonna skip one.
Yeah.
Let me see. The two, the two that I didn't know were the Meltdown and Gridrunners, but Scott explained that to me before. Um... I would say Buildmart probably that is, then the one that I understand the least.
Okay, I think Buildmart as a whole is definitely complex, but when you break it up into four different people's roles, it's not too bad, especially with Scott doing most of the heavy lifting, like on the mental department, um, so... It, I think, yeah, I think, I think we'll be good on Buildmart for the most, I'm, to be fair, I, I'm assuming... Uh, that's, that's like the one game where I'm just like crossing my fingers, like Scott, you got us, cause I, I'm not gonna build mart, so...
Oh yeah, no, I'm gonna be listening to Scott like it's no tomorrow, I'm gonna be acting as if I don't know anything else in life, and all I know is his communications.
No, yeah, I'm, I'm like so down to be, I think personally, I think I'd be the best at just like... All the materials are given to me, and I can build and craft everything pretty quickly, um...
Yeah.
Cause, so I, I think it would be like, maybe, I don't know, how, how do you break it up, Scott, normally? How do you, like, when you play?
Normally, we do it like three people, so like, I, I would have a plot, say Amy has a plot and the Suns has a plot, and then you're gonna go at the very start and just get like thirty-two of every piece of wood. And we're all gonna go and get our own materials for our first build.
Okay.
And then nor, once the first build is finished, that'll probably become the gold build, um, so then that person focuses on that. The second person who finishes their build, uh, then goes and starts the second one, and the person who didn't finish theirs then goes and helps the person with the gold build.
So, would you not do the, the two build strategy?
That's what I'm saying, so that's why it then turns into the two builds.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, okay.
It's just obviously, cause the thing is, if the blocks don't really get used in the first build, they'll probably be used elsewhere anyway, so...
Yeah.
Um, that's where we tend to do it, but...
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm down for that. I, I, I'm a quick crafter and builder. I, I'm sad that Bingo's out, cause I, I love that game, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is, this is gonna be my like remedy to it, um...
Yeah.
Cool, 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 cool.
Uh, yeah, I think like... Like later in the game, it can literally just be you three, for the most part, just getting resources, and then I'm just cranking.
Yep, yep.
Cranking my builds, um, yeah, alright, I think that's everything.
Alright, I was gonna say, I may head off, so I've got a, yeah, I've got an awful toothache, so I'm just gonna head off now anyway. But thank you guys for hanging out, I will, uh, so if you've got, if you have any questions, and you just are like, I don't know what to do here, just shoot us a message, and we can do any things as possible.
I'm so like down at any time to fill in on anything, um...
Yeah.
I'm, I love MCC, so...
Okay. Okay, and if anyone's ever, if anyone's ever free to just, even offstream, just play, just hop in, just let, let me know.
Suns, Suns, I'll be free tomorrow night, because I'm gonna be home anyway, so if you wanna just pop a text, so we can just play, um, just go over some things.
Okay, that'd be great.
I wonder, I, I guess it's a question for my chat, do you think Turtle Run will be the, cause you know Turtle Run like changed the second half of it?
Oh yeah, of course.
I wonder if it's, I guess we could assume it's gonna be the, the newer version of that, or possibly, uh, uh, I don't know, a, a different, different change?
We'll see the update video, and then we'll honestly create, like, we'll just be like, okay, well, like, maybe it'll be, I have no idea, but I'll see you guys, uh, I'll see you guys then.
Alrighty, I'll be feeling better. Bye!
Bye. That was fun. I really enjoyed that, I'm probably, I'm honestly probably gonna end too. Um, I'm exhausted, honestly, waking up at six AM does not agree with me. Um, that was a lot of fun, though. Um, I'm glad, I felt like, I feel like the team works, which I'm glad about, I feel like it works well, um... So I'm happy, I'm happy about that. Um, let me give you guys music. Hold. Okay, there you go, um, I probably honestly, next time I'll be alive will be MCC. This is very exciting, um, yeah, that will probably be the next time. Um, let me see who all is live. We can raid someone. What place do you think you're gonna finish? See, I would say, me personally, I have doubts, but with my, the rest of my team, I don't know, because... Me personally, I don't know where... Like, I wanna say winning, because of how, like, who knows, like with the rest of my team being as good as they are, like, I have hopes. I don't think I'm gonna be, I mean, I was saying this earlier, I don't think I'm gonna be the like, start playing and like, oh my god, like crazy skills, I'm not expecting that, um, but... Who knows? Um... Watch VODs and learn, yeah. That's... That's my plan.